We're looking at between twenty, around 25 comfortably. We can expand that a little bit, but again, it's a small space. All in probably thirty-three to forty people total in the restaurant at one time.
And all your restaurants have gaming and liquor licenses as well?
Yes, sir, to my knowledge, yes.
I guess the final question, the two companies, are you guys related at all? Either companies, do they have any relation to one another? Okay, thank you.
We're familiar with Dottie.
And we're familiar with...
They were one of the early adopters, excuse me. Speaking for Dottie, they were one of the early adopters of gaming in a safe, clean, really urban environment, and we liked it, quite frankly. We liked that model. We're different. We approach it differently, and we, you know, we have a pretty extensive menu, but nevertheless, we're familiar with them. We know they're in lots of different communities. But we're not related in any way, shape, or form, and have never met their ownership or management or...
Okay.
We've never had the opportunity to meet these young ladies.
Ms. Tennyson. We've never met her before.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Does Dottie's know that, are you just looking for beer and wine?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay, nothing else?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. I guess we need a motion to see if the council wants to open two more liquor licenses on beer and wine only. What, I don't know what class that is. Is there a class or?
I don't know. I have it up in my head, but...
Okay, beer and wine only, I'll make that into a formal motion.
I'm sure.
To make two liquor license available.
I want to be sure.
There's a motion.
Need a second.
Need a second.
Second.
Okay.
I think right there.
I need a roll call. You wanna... I guess we're doing, yeah, let's do them together. There's two. Roll call.
Can I put a question?
You wanna put a question, okay.
Go ahead. Is there anything that we need to have the city attorney look into? Issues going back to Alderman Lozaro's point that we turned down two existing businesses in town. I don't want to start a war or get us into a lawsuit that we're turning somebody down and then giving some other people.
Okay, Jeff can answer.
I don't believe so. We're not issuing the license tonight. All we're doing is make a recommendation to open up two liquor licenses, not necessarily to these two establishments, actually. We're opening up two beer and wine liquor licenses so the attorney could, you know, look at that before we finalize, but I don't think there's an issue in speaking with him before.
And the other two businesses in town will have equal access to those two newly opened up licenses?
I believe so. I'm not 100% sure because I'm not an attorney. But the mayor would grant, the mayor would grant the liquor license, the council has to open a liquor license.
So would that be, I'll address the mayor then. Would that be open to the other two businesses equally?
Honestly, I think, because I had a little conversation with Pat, it's not that we open one up and then first want to get their paperwork, we'd be opening up for a specific reason. You know, that's, it wouldn't be we open one up, beer and wine, and somebody can run in, you know, 801 and hand it in. It would be specific.
That goes back to my point. Do we need to look at this a little more, research it a little more? I mean, it sounds like there's some question as to what we're doing here. Mr. Murmice?
Well, typically, yes. Mayor's right, there's no, there's never a vacant license. We never have a vacant license, so when the committee makes a recommendation to issue a license, it's typically for a business that's come in and presented. So there's never a vacant license, so if we recommend, then likely, yeah, it would be for one of these businesses tonight.
And just so we're clear, excluding the businesses in town that are already applied and were turned down, so they can't apply.
I don't believe so.
Thank you.
Alderman Winger.
And just point of clarification, we can ask the attorney to review our intent, and then when we vote on it at the next city council meeting, have any questions answered too?
Okay.
Before we vote?
Will you wanna? Okay.
I would be in favor for it if we gave four liquor licenses, give the two that wanted liquor license as well as granting two additional.
Where, Mr. Mayor, were those just beer and wine, too? I wasn't here for that.
One was, they wanted margar, basically, they wanted margaritas and beer. Naturally, if we were giving out beer and wine, you know, you could ask them, I'm sure they would agree. The other one was a gas station, and it was packaged liquor only.
Want the gas station, too?
And...
Could we amend the motion?
Number one, those two no longer have a request because we sent them to denial, so there's, if you amend the motion, you open it up to anybody who wants to come in.
So we got a motion, we got a second.
One quick question.
Another question?
Well, I want clarification what the motion was. You made some changes to the motion, I'm not quite sure what those changes were, so if you could restate them, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
So for two liquor licenses, beer and wine only, for the approval, with the approval of the attorney, right?
Did you, so we cannot amend the other two and put them in the motion, is that right? But they can come back on their own, is that correct, after these two, and then we would hear what they have to say?
Yes. Voice, Mr. Mayor?
Basically, once they hear that, after they were just rejected, I'm sure they're gonna be running over here to let me have it.
That's the point I've been trying to make.
Done with questions, let's do a roll call.
Go over the motion one more time.
Two liquor license, beer and wine only, with the approval, the attorney has to look it over. That's the motion. What? Okay. Got it? Okay.
Does the second agree?
Yes, she did. Right?
Call the roll.
I agree, but the concern is, is that we're, it's not gonna go through, just based on...
Well, that's what we gotta vote on. That's why we vote.
Okay, yeah, agreed.
If you feel that way, then...
Yeah.
Okay, we can do a roll call.
Alderman Lozaro.
Just gonna throw that vote.
Yes.
I only say that because this isn't an easy vote.
Alderman Jacob?
No.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
No.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods? Alderman Sizmarsky?
No.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Oh. Motion fails. Thank you, gentlemen.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you for your guess.
I just want to bring up some things, the mayor, not to the mayor, but to the city manager, before I, before my committee's out. Mr. City Manager, I've never seen so many weeds in the city in my life. We need to address those and get it done, one way or another.
Okay.
I've never seen it so bad.
Okay.
Is there anything that you, that Mr. Vesta told you that he wanted to add into this?
Obviously, I was not cut properly, but no, that was all Mr. Chief Vesta had for the meeting.
Okay. I don't know if I left anything out or didn't recognize you or for, if I needed to, if I missed something, I apologize, so this is new to me.
Never mind.
You're just speaking, I don't even recognize you anyway, so. Okay, items be to consider for a future meeting, is there anything, let's say no, okay. Motion adjourned.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Called to order the Finance and Administration Committee. The minute taker, please take note that all same, same Alderman are here. I need approval minutes of the meeting for April 25th, 2013.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Opposed?
Staying.
Thanks, Peter. I need a, I got a report and recommendation, the council chambers audio system update. You have an informal motion?
It doesn't have to be a motion.
No, not a motion. Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You may recall about two years ago, the council approved the city staff to...
Can I interrupt for one minute? Shouldn't, I don't mean to take this off your plate, but I believe this should also fall under IT, and I would expect Nick to be out here to answer some of these questions that may arise. I mean, I just, go ahead.
This is not your committee.
Mr. Murmice?
Brad was just gonna give a brief overview, and Nick's fully prepped and ready to go. You want him to come out?
Mr. Wilson.
Thank you. Yeah, a little over two years ago, the council directed staff to upgrade the video components of the AV room, the cameras, things of that nature. At that time, the audio system was still working and in compliance, so we didn't do the audio portion of that. As per the memo, it's currently now not really in compliance anymore, and components are starting to fail, and with the newer video equipment that we have in there now, it's starting to roll a bit faster. So that's why the audio components are on there now, to replace them now. The video components, as well as the audio components, are to be paid for, reimbursed through the PEG fees that are generated on the AT&amp;T and soon to be Comcast bills. You may recall, we redid the franchise agreement with Comcast a few months ago in the fall to allow for the assessment of those PEG fees. Comcast is ready to go, we just need to get this approved, so we have a final number to give to them so that we can get that on the books with them. So really, it's the same thing that we did with the video side of it, with the reimbursement through those fees, it's just the audio side of the house now. And as Mr. Manager referenced, if there are any technical questions, Mr. Case is more than ready to come on and answer them, but just wanted to give a high-level overview first.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
All right, I have a couple of questions. This is a price tag, not to exceed $34,000. And my question earlier this week is, have we approached an attorney on this? The simple reason is, it's over $10,000. In our rural states, anything over $10,000 must go up for three quotes. So my question is, unless, if I am mistaken, it doesn't have to be, go up for quote unless it meets the standards that no other company could fit into our equipment. I just want to verify that tonight, that no one else's equipment could fit to our equipment, that this company that you are recommending, legally, we could award a contract to them even though it's over $10,000. I just want to make sure that we don't have to go out for bid and do it that way. So could someone verify that statement, that question I just asked, and then I have a follow-up on that?
Mr. Wilson, is there a way to break that up, break that total up and not have to have the whole amount, so you don't have to go out to bid?
Mr. Case did speak with Attorney Bond earlier in the week, and similar to the process we went through for the video side of the house, this is their equipment, while other companies do make audio equipment or whatever, I kinda explained it earlier, you know, you have a certain, you have the same brand DVD player, VCR, TV, stereo, you're not gonna buy another brand's receiver to try and integrate it all. And so unless Mr. Case corrects me from our conversation earlier, Mr. Bond did say that due to the nature of this equipment and this project, we were able to go with this company under those rules.
Do you want Mr. Case to come out?
Only if I'm wrong.
Mr. Wilson is correct, in speaking with Attorney Bond, the only difference would be, it's not necessarily the equipment, but the design of the system. Each individual company designs their own system, the way it works. Most companies can make it work with ours. This company designed all of our video aspect and all the components that are the recording aspect, all of this has to tie in together. So it would be wise to stick with the same company to integrate audio as well, because it's their design of our system. We, you know, if we had a third-party company come in, now we have two support contracts, we have something that isn't necessarily guaranteed to work, compatibility, there's gonna be other equipment involved, there's gonna be, and really, it's not the equipment, it's the design. That's the most important.
Mr. Eugene Wesley?
Let's go back. So after we invest this money into it now, that we're going to redo the mics, is there any other thing that we have to do? Because I sat here last time, and when we fought for, for that, to get the system, I said, why didn't we just do it all at once? Now we back here again, piecemealing it back together again. My question to you right now, is there anything else down the line that is going to have to be done to this chambers for the people to hear it the right way and to bring it up to code? Because I don't want to come back here again, we give $34,000, and next year, you're coming back and say, oh, now we gotta do this. Make, I said last time, do it all at once, and you guys told me...
I do recall, the only reason we took the audio portion out of it is the audio was still intact, we were still in compliance, and we, you know, the goal was to kind of squeeze as much time out of us as we could to kind of elongate the fact that in the next 10 or 20 years, we'll have to do it again. And with the way things progress, it's gonna be less than that. To answer your question, this will be the last step, the last phase, everything will be replaced at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Roy Wesley?
So, I've been talking about this for a while. So when are the people gonna be able to hear us?
Well, if, once this is passed, we're gonna get moving on it immediately, so...
So are we gonna be done with this?
I don't have a timeline on from start to finish, but I would assume less than a month after pass. As long, granted, if all equipment is in stock and it's able to be ordered, the design is there.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Woods?
When we get this new system, will it have more than one portable mic so we don't have to share amongst, like, eight presenters?
It will. There are two in the design, and they're fairly close to the fact that we can always add more at any time. The system will be designed to be able to hold multiple wireless mics.
And includes the podium?
That includes the podium as well, and all of your mics.
Ms. Winger?
Thank you. Regarding doing other upgrades or trying to get things to work better, with a home laptop, just the other day, I tried to pull up a committee meeting, and it just sat there, and it churned, and it churned. Maybe my laptop is outdated, it's probably four years old. Then I tried it on my iPad, and it worked a little better, but it wasn't quite there yet. How are we looking at the actual usage of being able to view these at home? I remember when we first started viewing, allowing people to download and view at home on their computer, it worked really well, but now it seems like it's harder to view.
Sure, there's a lot of factors involved in that, from each person's personal computer through to how they're accessing it, the size of the files, we try to keep them small so they're a little bit quicker, which also degrades our video quality, so you're not seeing things as well or hearing them. That is gonna come with the website. That, the issue is not any of the recording equipment, but it's more on the end of the website, where it's being accessed from.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Woods?
With the, now I forgot what the question was. With the, no, pass me, it'll come back to me.
Mayor?
Nick, you just mentioned the website. The website's so we, residents can view, do it on the web quicker, is that what you're mentioning, or upgrading our website? Because we spoke earlier, and I was gonna put it on items for future meetings, because you said, oh, it could be months, I would prefer a timeline.
Sure, are we talking about the website, or are we talking about the video?
The website, because you mentioned the website has to be upgraded so you can view at home on your computer.
That'll be a function of it that will help with speed and other things. That's, that will be a part of it. That's what's gonna help with the videos, we'll have an online storage and some other things. But are you referring to then a timeline on the website, completion or start date, or what are you looking for?
Well, actually, right, want to get some type of consensus here, when, when's this gonna take place?
The start, well, I'd have to bring it to council first, but it has been started. We are, we're still looking at a few different companies, we're going out to bid for it, it's gonna be a very expensive project, as you guys know. So we, we're looking at a few different companies currently, we've got a couple quotes in, still waiting for more. There are a lot of companies out there that do a lot of different things. There's a lot of function from certain site providers and not from others, and there's, you know, they have apples over here and oranges over here, and we're looking for the best combination of what we can get for, with one provider, for all the functions we want on our site. So that's, that's where we're at with that. It, I was gonna bring it to council once I had a better understanding of what each option is, and, okay, we have package A, package B, package C from provider A, B, and C. And then I was gonna bring it to council once I have all of that in a nice memo, and let you guys kind of have some decision there and decide what you want to go. I would assume that, to answer a timeline question, within, let's say, two months.
So when I ask for items on future tier, but May-June, right, June 29th? Yeah.
Time's up.
I got my memory back. Some of the communities upload to YouTube. I know that we talked about it. Is there a reason that we wouldn't do that? Wouldn't that save us server room, or does it have some benefits that we should look at, or not at all?
We can, we can absolutely upload to YouTube. We can create a YouTube account and do that, that's not a problem at all, and there's really no reason that I can think of right now that we couldn't or wouldn't necessarily want to.
And would that help with some of the issues that Alderman Winger was talking about?
Sure would.
Okay, so maybe we could do that?
Sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Case, I got a question for you as far as the website upgrade. Are we selling time on, how does that work? Are we selling time on the website to pay for, or is there a way to do that?
Selling time.
Add time or add space for the government channel? I've had people asking, that's the question, the reason I'm asking.
For example, are we, would we lease a section of the website for advertisements, et cetera? No.
Supplement the payment of this?
We do not, and I would most likely not recommend that. Being a city website, I don't know if you, even though it'd be a sole position, it's almost like promoting a business, I don't know if that would be a good idea.
Just for city, just for city businesses, I was looking at, so...
Okay, I mean, it's something we can certainly look into and talk about.
Mr. Wesley?
Is there a motion on the floor yet? All right, I'll make a motion, approved update for $34,000 for the update of the equipment in this room, providing that this is the last one I'm coming to die a sweat. So that will be my motion.
Second.
Second.
Need a roll call vote? Need a roll call vote? Any, I'm sorry, any other questions?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Alderman Lozaro?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Number five, a report and recommendation, SRF low-interest loan in for Phase 1B of the North Water, wastewater treatment plant project. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This, much like what was passed at the council meeting last week, is a very procedural item at the point that we're at with the treatment plant and the IEPA loan. Back in May of last year, the council passed a bond ordinance that was sent to IEPA for $18 million. At that time, back in May, that was kind of the best, best dart we had at what the number was gonna be. Subsequent to that, we finished the completion, you know, added the UV, and got the bids back, as we all know, came in at $20 million, 340. Statutorily, within the IEPA loan documents, we can add a 3% contingency, we can add capitalized interest during construction of up to 3%, and we can also add in engineering costs, construction engineering costs. So the difference between option A and B is the engineering cost there. And these are all amounts that are, that are statutorily allowed, that we can request through the IEPA for this loan process. One thing I want to emphasize, and it was in the memo, is that whichever of these numbers, or the original number, we choose is the ceiling of what we can borrow. It does not automatically obligate us to borrow that, it doesn't otherwise, you know, cause us to borrow that. It's just an ordinance from the city saying this is what we're ultimately possibly requesting. You may remember about 18 months ago, we had to pass one for the $9.9 million bond issue we did. Again, that's the authority for what the maximum amount we could ask for. So I would just caution that, you know, that some of these numbers, they're getting pretty big, but this is not a, what we're going to get or what we must take, it's the ceiling, it's just giving us headroom if we want to go up to that number. The caveat is if we don't pass a new bond ordinance, increasing it, then we're stuck at the 18 million, and if we're looking at 21 to 22 million in construction costs, then we're looking at four to five million out of pocket that we weren't specifically anticipating doing. So this is just to get the additional headroom for the remainder of the project, and as this is not obligating us to borrow that much money.
Eugene Wesley?
Here's my thought on this one. My thought is that we go ahead and go for $22,446 and $700. The reason why I'm saying that we go for that is, again, if we come to shortfall with the low-interest loan, I guarantee you, I don't care how many council members go down and meet with the EPA, that's it, you ain't going to get any more money. We did run in some situation with the treatment plant on the first phase already, on some tank cleaning that was not respected in the costs on this. I don't know, tell you the truth, I'm not the expert, I'm not the engineer, but I don't know what we could run into this for this next phase. I have no clue. I mean, we ran in some issues out there that we had go into the reserve money that we banked earlier in the project, that we banked some money in reserve, that we saved money, that we had go into that account and take some of that money out. We still have a wall that we're looking to finish up on that project. We, we discussed about putting the, knowing that we spending that kind of money, we, we thought about, some Aldermen talked about putting the Marine symbol and the Army signal right into the wall. That is not part of this project. So my suggestions, all the money that we have saved, we have spent quite a bit... So my suggestions, all the money that we have saved, we have spent quite a bit of that money, that we saved on the first phase of this. So I suggest that we go after it all, because simple reason is, like he said, we don't have to take it. It's just a loan. We don't have to take it, after the bottom line, we can say, we only want you to cut a check for $18 million, or $19 million, but I think we should go for the large amount. And I believe you also said, we would have, if we go to lower, we would have to come back here and change it again, if we ask for more money, an ordinance? I think I read it there.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes, that's correct, yeah, would be a third change to the bond ordinance, and once the project gets going, obviously becomes harder and harder
Right.
to change that number as you go along.
I mean, I would go for that.
Alderman-Woods?
Yeah, my question was of Alderman-Wesley, was that in the form of a motion?
Oh, that will be my motion, that's it.
Second.
Alderman-Jacob?
Just one question, it's almost like a no-brainer to go for the higher amount, but is there any negative impact of going for a higher amount?
The negative is, I would say the negative is, if we don't go to a higher amount, and we have a price tag that comes over higher, we run in a situation out there, you could dip in reserves, I mean, you could dip, take forward, like he said, you could take $4,000 of our reserve if you want, if we run into a problem. I mean, I'd rather play it safe, just like buying a house, take out as much as you can, and no one says you have to spend it.
Well, I agree with you, I'm just trying to just make sure that there's no negative to the city on doing that.
None, to my knowledge, unless Mr. Hardy knows of a detriment to going for a higher amount, I'm not aware of any.
It's all the questions, roll call vote?
Option B, right? That's what we're choosing. Yes.
Alderman-Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman-Winger?
Yes.
Alderman-Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman-Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman-Woods?
Yes.
Alderman-Szamarski?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Any items to be considered for the future meeting? They have a website upgrade from May and June. Anything else?
Yes, I, I just, I just want to make a mention here, that, as it was brought to my attention, that we spent $130 Thursday, last Thursday, to get the city hall grass cut, which is crazy, when we had more than enough time to get it done, and we're paying overtime to get the grass cut. I cut those 200 acres over by oak meadows, and it gets cut, and I don't understand why the city couldn't get theirs done.
Sure, as we went over before, it was scheduled for, in the afternoon, there was a downpour in the afternoon, so we had to stay after, to wait till the rain was done. And I know you're going to comment that scheduling should have been done better, so I guess scheduling should have been done better, but we wanted the city to look nice that day, so we don't have to ask overtime.
All week.
Eugene Wesley?
I would like this on agenda, or unless someone could give me the answer now. Are all the computers that we purchased installed through the whole city? You don't have to give me the answer today, you don't have the answer.
They are.
So every computer that we purchased are now installed?
Minus the spare ones, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Woods?
Has all the software been converted over, since we're on that case? Everybody's operating under the same
Correct.
operating system and?
Operating system, office version, antivirus version, all of it.
Excellent. Thanks.
Any other questions? Make a motion adjourned?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Let's hear his.
That passes. Report and recommendation, H.R. Green, Elgin-O'Hare project presentation, bicycle pedestrian consideration. I'll turn that over to H.R. Green.
Good evening, for those of you that have not met me before introduction, I'm Scott Markwork with H.R. Green. As I get the presentation set up, we had our first presentation two weeks ago, on this topic, and at that time, it was an introduction to, that's the wrong button. There we go. We had a introduction on the project, on what was going to be coming up, kind of let you know what you'd be seeing on subsequent meetings, some of the decisions that would be necessary as we go through the projects, and the decisions that the tollway is looking for on this. So, what I'd like to do is, what I'd like to do as we go through these meetings, is summarize recent events, keep you current on it, go through the presentation, get the direction and such that we're looking for in a particular evening, and at the end of the meeting, wrap it up, and provide you an update of what's going to be coming up at future meetings. Keep telling you what's coming, so when we come back to you again, that you've heard it a time or two before, make sure that you're familiar with the topics, and give you the opportunity to ask any particular questions. The more advanced that we can address some of these concerns, the better off it tends, the process tends to run. So, I'll usually spend just a few minutes on recent events, a couple of things that have happened since we last met. We've been working with the tollway and DuPage County about some design changes along Wooddale Road, that affect access to the Courtyard by Marriott. So I had met with Assistant CD Director Henigan, and staff members from Courtyard. At the Courtyard, went over the plans, received information from them on what they needed for access, and have conveyed that back to the tollway designers, has to do with their north driveway, which is their main entrance, on maintaining as much access as possible. Also, that day last Tuesday, the Village of Itasca had hosted a open house, where they had distributed notices to all of their residents and all of their businesses. At that meeting, there were 179 people that officially signed in, the estimate was between 250 and 300 people that did attend this open house. John Forrest did come over and see that, gave an idea of the information that the tollway can make available to the communities, their residents, and businesses, so it's something to, for information to consider in the future. There is a link on the Village of Itasca website, that does have the, also on the tollway website, that does have the handouts, the information that was available at that meeting. It's another resource to see the type of info, the type of materials, the type of project that's coming forward. And then last week, we met again with city staff, and also your village engineer, to go over utility conflicts, coordination, and coordination about the bicycle path, pedestrian type enhancements. So it's a quick summary of what's happened recently. This is a slide that you have seen before, a couple of weeks ago, it's a list of some of the ideas and topics that will come before you, and try to give you a look-ahead schedule on when you'll, we'll be bringing some of those topics to your attention. Tonight, we want to go over the pedestrian and bike system, coming up in the near future, lighting, signals, emergency vehicle preemption. These are all enhancements to systems above and beyond what the tollway would normally put in, they can be aesthetic enhancements and such, that we'd be looking for direction on. Shortly thereafter, we'd like to bring some information on utility upgrades, there's a lot of impact on water and sewer along this corridor, and bring some recommendations, so we can start providing that information to the tollway. And then there's other topics on there that you see that will be coming up shortly thereafter, just specific meetings are not yet scheduled in regards to those topics. So, tonight, bicycle pedestrian system. The next slides that you're going to see, it will visually show existing pedestrian network, I'll explain what the tollway construction policy is, show what the tollway will build at no cost to the community, and then show you options of what can be added at this time, take advantage of the opportunity to consolidate some of these improvements within the overall tollway project, along with info on our recommendations. It's, we've worked with staff, both Public Works and Community Development, with some of the ideas, but we want to see if there's any other ideas, input, and such.
Mr. Mayor, can you enroll for me? Frank, can you enroll for me?
All right, go ahead.
Here's the situation I see on this project already. When we first came to, when you first gave your presentation, we did ask that some aldermen be appointed to sit on this committee. My concern about this now, is we having all these special meetings with our staff and everything else, and this is coming forward. And now, you're asking me to make a decision, or possibly make a decision on, tonight, on what, the bicycle pedestrian bridge?
What we are asking for is some direction, oh.
Go ahead.
Okay. Some direction, if you do want to proceed with enhancements or not. One thing to make clear is, a commitment at this time does not obligate you to that expense. Built within the intergovernmental agreement that will occur in the future, we've done the same thing in the Village of Itasca, is, gives the community the right to, once bids are received, keeping in mind, these projects aren't bid for about two years yet. If bids come in unreasonably high, or for some reason the community cannot move forward with those enhancements, it does give the community the ability to withdraw from those. So we're asking for commitments, general direction, not asking anybody to sign a check right now, there's nothing that's a commitment to the current fiscal year budget. This is a year, two, three years in the future, to give some idea for planning for the future. Part of the reason some of the topics are coming up at the pace they are, we have 30% concept plans in hand for the entire project, and we do actually owe the tollway some comments back tomorrow. One of the topics has to do with bicycle and pedestrian enhancements, ideas, community's willingness to include some of these items.
But again, let's do a follow-up with my question that I have. We knew pedestrian bridge discussion was coming up, our staff knew. We had given response back, am I correct?
Yes.
Again, I looked at the mayor's appointments, again, we still don't have two aldermen on this position to give the aldermen consideration for the decision-making, even though we're doing it tonight, but we don't have any documents that were produced to us, on what was discussed in the staff about the pedestrian bridge, because, again, we seen it today, but we did not get copies of a meeting that they have on this project. That is a biggest, one of the bigger than a treatment plant project. That's what I'm trying to say here, we are not getting memos, so we're doing this by the fly now, because we don't know. Scott, we're not being asked to make any really hard decisions right now. Is that correct?
Correct. If, at the end of the evening, what I'd like to get is general direction, do you want to proceed with bike and pedestrian enhancements?
Okay.
And there would be a future cost to Wooddale?
Okay, why don't we go ahead and finish your presentation, and then we'll get some more questions afterwards then. Okay, thank you, Scott.
Okay. All right. Tollway construction policy. The policy that they will follow is, if there's an existing bike path or sidewalk that's affected by the project, they will replace that. Also, understanding that there's certain logistics to building paths, sidewalks, et cetera, across the tollway or under bridges. The tollway has committed to, on major structures, one of which would be the Wooddale Road Bridge over the Elgin-O'Hare. On the bridge, they will build a 10-foot wide path, they will make that accommodation for future pedestrian routes, at their expense. That is a several hundred thousand dollar figure that they're picking up. What they're also doing is, on certain bridges, they're building, one example, one would be Lively Boulevard, they will build the bridge, Elgin-O'Hare, over Lively, longer than would be necessary just for the roadway, to provide the additional space to put a path or sidewalk connection underneath it. So it's, again, a pretty good expense that the tollway is picking up, to make those accommodations for future systems. Keeping in mind, we're not just looking at paths and sidewalks that exist today, but 20, 30, 40 years in the future. So, that's what the tollway will do. So the next slides I want to show you is, first slide, I'm just going to point out a couple of locations, so everybody's familiar. Prospect Avenue, Salt Creek, Middle Boulevard, Wooddale Road, Lively Boulevard, Route 83. You're going to see the same slide with additional information, it's actually the same slide that we're looking to use for other topics, enhancements, familiarity with the project. This is, what's in orange, is the existing sidewalks, bike paths, that exist as they are currently. Salt Creek Greenway Trail, which also then comes out on the middle, continues up through the industrial park, up to other communities. Very important link through the area. You've got on-street bike paths along Middle, some sidewalk along Wooddale, and then up here in this area, in Elk Grove Village, there's sidewalks along those roadways. That's what exists currently. The next slide, in blue, is going to show what the tollway is going to build. Again, as I mentioned on Wooddale, they will build that on the bridge. They're going to do some work along Route 53, because of a complete streets policy along state highways. Excuse me, Route 83. What's shown along here on Middle, in orange and blue, well, that's existing, and that's also proposed, as they do the improvements there, they'll reestablish what is in that area. One of the features that they are doing, that they wouldn't normally, is a bike path at their expense, they'll do from Wooddale Road over to approximately Top Golf. The reason they're doing that at their expense is, what they're actually doing there, is their, the existing Thorndale Avenue pavement is going to become the North Frontage Road, and there's enough pavement there to use it as a bike path. So for virtually no cost, for restriping the existing pavement, they will put that path in. That's one of the exceptions to the typical policy.
Mayor? On Thorndale, going to Top Golf, basically, that's going to be a two-way, I heard talk of two-
of two lanes, one lane each way, east and west, one east, one west?
From?
Is that, or is it two, two lanes each way, from, from Middle to Top Golf?
From, from Middle Boulevard, west to Top Golf, it's two lanes, one lane each way.
Okay, so it's not going to be?
A buffer area, and then the bike path is separated from the roadway. But that's reusing existing pavement. These are improvements that are at tollway expense, no local expense at this time. The next slide I'm going to show you is going to show kind of all the potential enhancements that we have thought about, looked at, talked with staff, looked at prior recommendations, prior documents and such. That's everything out there, but that's not actually what we recommend that Wooddale Pursue doing at this time. In purple, you'll see some additional items. This, you know, along, along Wooddale Road, there's a fairly short distance to connect existing sidewalk to the bridge across, connect up on this side. There's some logic in, now you've completed a pedestrian network all the way around there, providing another loop. Along the south side, there's a potential to put a path that could tie into some regional paths, long-term plan along Route 83, that could run all the way along here, parallel to the frontage road. Okay? And also under, along Lively Boulevard, under the bridge. Okay? Those are different ideas that could be completed, and one last one is over at the west end, it's adjacent to the Top Golf facility, kind of from the existing path that would end about here, up to the existing sidewalk along Prospect Avenue. Those are the total that we have seen, as I mentioned, staff, various documents such for pedestrian ideas along this corridor. Some of those, we don't recommend that you do at this time, or in conjunction with the project. And that's the next slide I'll go to, and I can explain why. What?
Alderman R. Wesley?
You, you keep on saying staff, who is staff? Our city staff?
We've met with John Forrest, with Rich Gallus, we've talked with Manager Murmas.
I, excuse?
Go ahead.
I, I really have a problem with this, because there's no, again, there's no, no one from this, it goes back to, to putting someone on this, this staff to, to talk about this, someone from up here. Who knows best about this community than the aldermen here? Mr. Gallus doesn't even live here, he can't even get here for a flood, we have, we have, we have, John?
Point of order.
Yeah.
I mean, let's, let's be realistic here, let's, uh...
Okay, thank you.
We're talking about money here.
Right, excuse me, didn't we make some kind of a note saying that we were going to get a steering committee? Jeff, is that, go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, that's one of the, the goals, we're, we're waiting for that committee to be appointed. Until then, this is similar to any other staff presentation recommendation, where your, your team, we come up with ideas, we present them to you, you add to the ideas, you vote on it, we don't vote on it, we present you information, you provide input, so it's really no different than another project, until we get a steering committee together, we're giving you brainstorming ideas.
Okay, all right, I agree, but we are going to be putting together a steering committee soon.
I can't put together a steering committee, that's, that's, the mayor appoints committee members, staff doesn't do that.
Then I'll ask the mayor.
My impression was, we still had some time before we started making some of these decisions. Now, tonight, tonight, we're not really making the decisions, are we? I, I mean, I'm not, explain to me?
He's asking for direction. For tomorrow.
What, um, what we're looking at is general interest, baseline-type improvements. Yes or no, does, is the city interested in doing more, taking advantage of the opportunity of Elgin O'Hare, doing more improvements, or just accepting what the tollway is proposing to do? If, for example, the, the direction is to do some of the, you'd like to pursue further some of the additional improvements, that's how we'll convey the information to the tollway. The cost estimates on here are ours, they're based on the available information. As the tollway engineers revise the plans, the first thing we would ask them for is, yes, Wooddale is interested in possibly doing these additional enhancements at these locations, please provide us more information on the exact costs. Just because we're asking for it, doesn't mean we've obligated the city to do it at this time. But it is one of the comments, first comments that they're looking for responses back for. Understanding, we, working within the existing committee structure until the steering committee is established, we thought this was one of the topics that we could, could work through and try to get some responses back to the tollway, to show them that we are trying to address, trying to meet their timelines.
Alderman Woods?
A couple of things, first, to City Managers Murmas' comment, in all fairness, this isn't quite like any other projects we've done, this is a once-in-a-lifetime project, so some of the apprehension and fear that, I think all the aldermen up here have, is things are going by and we're not having any input into it. I, I appreciate what you're saying, and, you know, and if that's 100% the case, it's almost a question of why do we need a presentation if nothing we say matters? I, I would think we could all agree that, yes, we want to have input, I think that's what's been said, but it seems like we're, when I looked at, and I was at your last meeting at Itasca too, and talked to some people over there, there's a lot of things happened, there's a, happening, there's a lot of moving parts, and, and there is a fairly expansive timeframe that all this is going to happen over, but we all know in these big projects, things said early are things that get done. So again, I think I'll restate everybody's concern up here, that we're, we're not getting input necessary to make the decisions we're being asked to, to make, even though you say that our decision really doesn't mean anything today.
Well, one of the, at, at this point, what I do want to make very clear is, this is ideas from some people. This is when we want your ideas. Are there other locations along this corridor type of stuff? This is, this is a, an interactive, we had to start with something to provide some, provide you what's going to happen as a baseline that the tollway will do, explain what else, to be thinking and talking about what can be done in, in addition to that. So, we, we welcome comments, suggestions, do, do more, do less, how about a different location, type of thing, that's, that's what we want to hear.
You know, I think what, what we want to hear, and I think maybe this is something that we can pretty much solve quickly, is if we can appoint some aldermen to this steering committee. And I would ask the mayor, when you think we can possibly get this done, so we can move forward without not feeling that we're not getting any input on this. Mayor?
Well, number one, I mean, I read the memo, it says zero to 400,000. Talking to some of the aldermen up here, you know, they want to make sure that this area is looking good, basically it's our gateway, master corridor plan, industrial park, everything. Now, everybody wants to make sure it's looking nice. You know, some of the suggestions maybe are, are good, and I guess staff would recommend some suggestions to whoever's on the steering committee, or let's say not steering committee, but who's on the committee, just to give some input. We can do that next week, no problem, but basically, you want a consensus, do we, do we want to move forward? I think the council wants to move forward, but we'd like some input, you know, did anything even go to our streetscape committee who handles this?